Meeting of the Darien Zoning Board of Appeals. We have in attendance myself, Michael Metter, Jeff Williams, Chuck DeLuca, Ruth Van Ramsey, and Vic Capalupo. Dan Waldit is attending as well, but he will not be a voting member this evening unless there's some technical difficulties. We're going to hear the applications in the order that they are listed on the agenda for this evening. We have two applications that have been removed, the Oxridge application and the application of the Celts. With that, we'll go ahead and start with calendar number two, 2020, Rebecca, Jeff Morrison, to allow the construction of wood footsteps, covered porch, make a third story raised roof addition at third and Prospect.
Good evening. Can you see the presentation?
We cannot. Yeah, Rebecca.
Okay, can you let me know what you do? Oh, sorry, one second. Does that show now?
Yes, it does.
Excellent. So I'm Rebecca Morrison and my husband Jeff Morrison is also in the picture. And also joining us is George Kiprios. I don't think he's up on the screen yet, but he is an architect who has been helping us with the project. So he might chime in as well.
I'm here. I'm just muted.
Okay. So George is here as well. So for those that, I'm just thinking about brief background on the project. For those that weren't involved in the meeting in February. We're hearing background noise. Are you, is everyone hearing that?
Yes, I'm hearing it.
Can you hear me? Is okay? Oh, that's better. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Doesn't matter what I say.
Okay, so 13 Prospect Avenue obviously is our house and we're requesting three separate variances, one for the exterior staircase, one for a height volume change, and one for a porch addition. For those that weren't present at the first meeting, the house is a very historical house on Prospect Avenue. The house isn't made for modern day living and the fact that the kitchen and living level is basically what you see in the lower right-hand corner of that picture. It's in the basement. And our plan is to try to bring that back to the original parlor level floor, which is shown in the upper left-hand side of the, pick the picture in the upper left-hand side, that parlor levels floor and try to bring it back to the original main level of what was considered that, of the original portion of the house. There was an addition that was placed on in the 1950s, which is that wing off to the left. That wing leads to nowhere. And really, what we're trying to do is expand the height of that back to the parlor floor level, add a porch to marry the original front porch and bring, take a couple of the different level changes out of the plan so to make it a much more unified design. So let me just go through what we've done since the last meeting to hopefully bring it, bring some clarity to the project. So since the last meeting, we really did spend a lot of time trying to clean up the dimension lines for easier reading. We have noted that the historical structure is 36 foot 1 inches in length. The current front porch is 21 feet 2 inches in length and 6 foot 2 in width. The proposed raised landing at the front door, which would be under the existing front porch roof is 14 4 in length and the stairs extend 4 feet past the current front porch line with the stairs being 6 foot in width. The proposed front porch extension would be 22 feet 11 feet in length and 6 foot 2 inches in width, again to marry existing front, short front porch line. The proposed change in roof line on addition would be an additional 3 foot 6 and 1/2 inches. We also went back and worked with the architectural review board among with the Darien Town historian Marion Castell to make sure that everything was to her liking. We made sure that we talked to her and we've graded, agreed to grade the front lawn, so it will now slope upwards to the house and there will be one less stair. We changed all the new windows to read in a more consistent manner with the matching frills, panes, and mullions found on the existing top floor of the house. We changed the dimensions of the shutter also and placed historical tiebacks and hinges on all the windows. And we changed the front door to a solid wood door with a circle or accurate side lights. Those were all some of the things that she suggested and we've taken all her suggestions and incorporated them into the plan. Does anyone have any questions so far?
I do. There was a suggestion either by the A or B of the town historian that you step that addition back a bit so it doesn't look like it's a plain front all the way across.
We, we talked to her and we agreed that she wanted a distinct difference between the left and the right sides and we agreed that what would happen would be that there would be new pilasters and paneling at the front door and the entry and that we would differentiate the columns in order to make sure that there, that the difference in reading, we're doing the left and the right side, which we actually have decided that that was a really good idea. And we've noted that and it's shown in A3.
So did she start off on the plans that we have now?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you go back, I'm going to quickly go through the existing levels which shows slide number two.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes, sure.
How did, how did that, the level differentiation, how did that come about?
The original, when we bought the house, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean, what, what caused the fact that the left side of the house isn't on the same floor level as the right side of the house?
The 1950s addition. They put that addition into the house in the 19, I'm going to go back to the original picture. Do you see that? So the, what they did to the original house, it actually, they added in 1950s that door that leads from the street and that left wing that leads to nothing. So that, that kind of incorporates that level change. The kitchen probably more than likely was always in the basement because at the time, you know, whoever owned the house probably wasn't the one that was cooking.
I think Rebecca, can I interject for a second?
Yeah, sure.
I think that in the 50s, when they did it, it was like a popular design would have split levels. And I think that maybe someone convinced them they could turn their Italianate Victorian house into a split level by doing that. Maybe. That's just a guess.
Pardon me, is this Mr. Kiprios speaking now?
Hello?
Yeah, that's my, thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go quickly onto the existing levels. I'm just going to quickly brief on that. So as you can see in existing one, the, the upper and mid-level plans, these were the original, obviously, levels of, well, the upper level is the three bedrooms that were probably always there. We're not planning to change any of that. The mid-level change, that's where you'll see the existing mid-level plan. That's where you'll see that living room off to the left and that front. That again, what George is talking about made it, made it that split level so that when you enter right now, you're forced with deciding whether you're going to go to the left and go into that room that leads to nowhere in the living room. Or whether you're going to go up the stairs or down the stairs, up being to what's currently the master bedroom and the bedrooms at the top floor or down into the living level space. And then the lower level plan is where there's an addition in the 80s that's off the back that probably was a porch at one time. That is, again, makes no sense for the current structure. The basement has the kitchen and what is currently our dining room, which is basically a pass-through to every traffic area in the house. So if I'm going to go to the existing, existing elevations, which shows the different planes of the house and how many different roof lines there actually is and how the house right now really doesn't have any cohesive format and that 50s addition is kind of just stuck off to the left, not making any architectural sense. Does anyone have any other additional questions before I move on? No? Okay, great. So this is the site survey. And I zoomed it in in the next slide and I'll show you that. But it basically states the three variance requests that we're asking for. One, raising the facade, one story, which is an additional 3 foot 6 and 1/2 inches. That obviously we need to raise it. If we raise the floor, we need to raise that in order to get the proper clearance and height in the interior. Adding a central exterior staircase, projecting out an additional 4 feet from the porch line. That is from, obviously, from the road up into that parlor floor. The parlor floor probably eventually once had that staircase and so we're really just putting it back in. And then extending the porch across the entire facade, which is again 6 foot 2 in width, which is the same exact projection and 22 feet 11 inches, which is the length of the current, current formal living room. And then the next slide, basically all we've done is we've rotated the site survey so that it matches our plan, so it's a little bit easier to read. You'll note when you see this that the, if, the, if we were to meet actual code, the 30 feet, the 30 feet that's required on Prospect Avenue actually goes through, you'll see that that dash line through the middle of our house, well, not the middle, but quarter of the way into our house. So originally Prospect Avenue had a 20-foot setback. The road was probably expanded at some point. And so the current, it, current, currently, we're only 17 foot 8 to that porch, but the 30-foot setback, again, the original, goes, goes through the house. And so that's what's noted there. Does anyone have any questions before I move on?
Yeah, does the, does your?
Okay. So this is A1. What we've highlighted in yellow is the area shown. Excuse me?
I just, I wanted to ask you
What?
How the, how, how the houses line up on the street? Does yours
Yeah.
line up with all the rest of the houses, including the porches?
No, every house on Prospect Avenue is unique. It's unique in both historical, they're all different styles. They're all in the same, obviously, built by the same time period, but they're all, they're all unique in their own right.
The original, all the older original homes are probably within inches of each other. The house next door to us is, the front porch lines up with our front porch. There's another house that is very similar, yellow, down the hill a little bit, but it is about the same distance. And there's the one, two over that is also very similar.
Okay.
But each of the houses are unique in style.
Right.
So that, this is A1. It shows the area of the addition of the front facade. So we've highlighted exactly where that addition falls within that setback. The staircase again is the 6 feet and it juts out an additional 4. And then it shows that the new, the new porch and how it lines up. What we did also since our last meeting is we, I actually contacted everyone in the United States that really knew a lot about his Victorian houses and architecture and talked to several of them, including a woman named Janet Foster and we should have had a letter from her within our packet. Janet Foster is the Associate Director of Urban Planning and Historical Preservation at Columbia University. She also wrote a book on the Queen Anne's House and America's Victorian vernacular. So she's the authority on Victorian houses within the United States. And she, she wrote a letter basically saying that the design that we've come up with really brings that house, the art house, back to the original Italianate style. So I just, you have the complete letter, you have her biography, her resume, but I just highlighted a second section of her letter, which says the present design solution is extending the front porch across the reconfigured entry and continuing the line of the porch across the side of the extension of the building significantly improves the appearance of the overall building and allows it to be read once again as an Italianate styled house. Raising the entry up several steps is typical of the approach to many historical houses and it makes the porch as an inviting space looking out onto the street, but literally above the fray of the street and traffic. This is the style of an Italianate porch. We've spent a lot of time researching it and again, since, like I said, since our meeting, we've gone back and really worked hard with the Architectural Review Board and Marion Castell to incorporate all the changes that she thought were appropriate and had her also read Janet Foster's letter and really are trying to do the best we can for the street and for this house to bring it back to the level of beauty that it could be. This is A2. Again, it shows, shows the 1950s, 50s addition and how old we use and historical structure of the 1950s foundation to remain. So we are going to use this, this structure and we're trying our best again to really show the beauty of this house. This is A3, which is the, what the addition will look like with the extension of the porch, the staircase. And really, it shows that, that again, that 3 foot 6 and 1/2 elevation, the staircase and the porch. This also is a letter which I think that you have from the Architectural Review Board and Marion Castell saying that, that they agree that adding a central staircase and the porch across the facade and all the windows being 6 over 6 really brings back the Italianate style of the house and that we are trying to do well by the town and by the house in doing this addition and bringing it back to the original beauty.
Rebecca, this is George. I just wanted, just because of the question earlier, this is the slide where you can best see that in order to create a visual distinction from the original box of the house to the newer parts of the house, how the line of the edges carried through, there's a, there's a, there's a blow-up elevation on the bottom. Yes?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Can you just identify yourself to the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm George Kiprios. I'm a designer who worked with Rebecca on the house. Okay.
Sorry, good job. Thank you.
Yeah, George Kiprios, designer for Rebecca Morrison on the house. I was just going to point out because of the question was asked earlier about whether it was addressed to draw some sort of distinction in the architecture between the most original part of the house and the additions. And this was, you can see it's, there's the double pilasters of the porch, which marked the entry, which was one of the recommendations from historians. But also when you're behind the pilasters, looking at the actual house, there's a bit of a step on the facade and that creates a line that continues to the level above it that draws, you know, to the right is the original house to the left is addition. So that was it.
But again, let us, George, that it makes an architectural distinction between the left and the right side, which is what Marion had asked us to do. This is A3. It's less of a, can you guys see that? It's a less of importance, important elevation, but it shows that the stairs extend out the 4 feet past the current front porch line and the stair width again being 6 feet. And again, in this slide, you can see that we've added the details to the windows that she asked for and really tried to incorporate all the details of the house that Marion thought was important. This is the proposed back elevation. Again, you'll see in this the, the roof line change and really how now, instead of being a jumble of different roof lines in the back, that there is a much more of a symmetry between the roof lines and in the, now the proposed elevation. The side elevation. From the other side, again, showing the roof lines and how they now, there's less of them and there's more consistency within that. This is what was suggested at one point in our last meeting with the town, which was what would it look like or how would it look like? If, how would it look if the porch wasn't there? And this is what slide, the alt A3 is hopefully showing you. We went back and we created an elevation that shows what it would be if it was, the porch wasn't there. If a porch wasn't added, the windows would start between 6 foot 8 and 8 foot 8 due to the slope of the land, a level which would make the property's presentation historically inaccurate. One of the key details of an Italianate house is the elongated windows met by a porch. This is consistently showed and it's also in the letter that we gave to you. And so that, you can also see that in the picture that is in the below, the example of a Italian porch shown by the typical porch extension and the front wooden staircase detail. So that's what it would look like.
Just a question on that.
Sure.
Could you go back to that, go back to this?
Absolutely.
What was wrong with the one that didn't have the porch extension over the new addition?
The windows start at a height that just really makes it inaccurate, historically inaccurate. So you're, you're back, you're going back to really bastardizing, for lack of a better term, what, what is, would be a historically accurate house in Italian detail that is typical of that and, and you were doing something that, that would not be historically accurate.
But the windows are still at the same elevation from the ground, whether you have the porch or not, right?
Right, but then now you're seeing a complete, you're seeing this, this brick foundation that would be about 8 feet tall and it just wouldn't look historically accurate. So you're, you're, you're losing the historical detail that's found in the Italian house.
Okay. Those windows, you know.
So that's, that's a detail. What?
A question that will be helpful and help, help the board a little bit here. What is the, what is, what is the basis in the nature of the hardship that you're claiming for this property?
It's an historical hardship.
Okay, so it's, it, as, as I see it, it's a two-part hardship. It's, it's one that you have a house that's too close to the road because the setbacks changed. And on top of that, because of the nature and character of the neighborhood and the nature and character of this historical structure, you need these variances and those are really your hardships, right?
Correct.
Okay. So Vic, I think, what you get into with that, and this is, sorry, this is Michael Metter speaking, is that if, if it's historically accurate, you, you know, have that porch there and that's the nature of that hardship, we checked with town council today and that is a valid reason to grant a variance. So I just.
Okay.
Can I speak one more time?
I've never heard that, but, okay.
Can I speak one more time? This is George Kiprios. I just wanted to point out that on the alternate version, that compared to the proposed version, on the proposed version, there is one lower roof line running all the way across. And in the, in the alternate version, it would go back again, not just the porch, but the roof of the porch. So you're eliminating this big gold object, which is the harmonious roof line that didn't appear. It's not just the window, which is a valid point, but also that instead of having this depth of roof.
Were you able to hear George? No? So he's, he's basically saying that, he's basically said that not only are in the alternate roof, on the alternate proposal, not only are you eliminating the porch, but you also are missing the harmonious aspect of the roof because the roof now would be pushed in. So, so the roof line would no longer be carried over. Did everyone hear that?
Yeah, that was clear.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we heard it.
Okay, great. So I'm going to go to the next slide, which basically just again highlights the comparisons of the prime excess elevations, the existing, which has no level consistency, the multiple planes, the split level at the entrance and the kitchen in the basement. And then we go to the alternative again, which has the stairs added, but with no porch, the facade remains architecturally inaccurate. That roof line isn't the same and we no longer have that porch that carries over that meets at the Italianate historical accurate structure. And then the proposed, which is the architecturally accurate with the windows are anchored by the porch and the consistency exists in the front facade between the old and the now.
Can I just say something?
So you'll see, obviously, there's the three different, three different proposed elevations.
Right, the old.
All the, the old and the proposed.
I don't think we're so concerned with the historical accuracy.
If I can ask one question, this is Chuck DeLuca speaking. When we're looking at this particular drawing and I guess it would be the upper right, there is no porch there. I think somebody had pointed that out.
That's correct.
Did the idea of a porch develop later? And was it, was sort of a, an add-on? Or was this originally, your addition originally planned to not have an extended porch?
No. No.
Or is this just meant to demonstrate what it would look like without the porch?
Exactly.
We always wanted the porch.
We, we, we spent a, we spent almost 10 years trying to develop this plan. George and I worked together in the Architecture Department of Ralph Lauren and, and really have a love for historical buildings. And, you know, we, we bought this house knowing full well that it needed to be restored and the beauty needed to be put back into this. And we've really spent close to 10 years. We thought it would be a much simpler process to figure out what would be the correct solution. But we really feel confident that this is it. And the porch needs, in our mind, needs to be there in order to bring this back to the way it should be looked.
A couple more questions if I might, since I have the floor. How big is the house going to be when it's completed if we approve the project? How many square feet?
We're actually not adding that many square feet. We're just changing the volume structure. How many square feet? George, do you know that off the top of your head?
I don't, but I will get it right now while you're talking.
Okay, while, while you're doing that, when was the original house built?
1866.
And just so I'm clear. And just so I'm clear, um, I'm looking at the picture from your very, very first slide.
Yes.
Is that a door that's on, on the porch?
Yes.
Yes.
Was that the original front door, or was that just a door to get out to the porch?
Yes, yes, no, that was the original front door. So like I said before, those stairs that were, must have been there that led to that door, that is the original.
Okay, I, I, that's what I was guessing, so that box there was the original house.
Correct.
Everything, everything to the left, including the front door.
Correct.
Except for that, if you look, if you look above the door there, there's another roof line.
Yep.
You can see, that was original as well.
I see, okay, so that was.
The box behind, the box behind the front door is original.
I see.
So the, so the three bay windows on the porch level right now were the original parlor floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Does anyone else have any, so, and then the, the last two slides are letters that you should, from Janet Foster, that you should have, which is, again, the, um, really the, his, the person that we've, um, contacted and we feel, um, really spoke to and has the most knowledge of, the professor at Columbia University, um, about Italianate houses and Victorian architecture. Um, she is, um, really the foremost person in this, in our country. Um, and then we just also, um, a letter from Edward Stanley about just how this house was actually constructed. But I'm gonna go back to, um, I'm gonna go back to the, the, the one that, the front elevation comparison. And is there anything else that? And I, I think just, just quickly, um, we did contact some people about, um, just what the historical, um, uh, historical properties in Connecticut and how, how, what the state is actually doing in order to try to make, preserve these structures. And there are different things, um, right now, a group of lawyers currently is also trying to work with the state to revise the statutes that do govern these variances, that they would replace the unique hardship standard with factors that are more functional, such as, um, determining whether the variance would adversely impact the character of the neighborhood. And we really feel that by, um, building this and, and really trying to historic, historically preserve this house, that we are doing something that, yeah, would actually benefit our neighborhood and benefit the town and the street.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
This is George Kiprios, I have floor area numbers.
Hi, this is, I'd like to say, ask a question.
Sorry, the question was, what the addition of the rear is on the proposal?
Yes, I had asked, I had asked, uh, a square footage, yep.
Okay. Um, on the parlor floor, it's about six hundred seventy square feet. And on the basement level, it's about five hundred ten square feet. So it's, um, one thousand one hundred and eighty square feet.
Hi, this is Ruth Ann Ramsey. Uh, has the state circuit rider come down to look at your house from the state historical society?
No.
Okay.
On the wing that, uh, the new wing, uh, so that, just so I'm clear, that's going to be all lifted up? It, it's not gonna be torn down?
No, it's not gonna be, no, we're gonna be using it.
And how about the chimney on, o- over on the left, how are you gonna handle that?
We're gonna use it.
But is that gonna be built, built higher?
Yes, it's an, it's not, it's gas, it's not, it's not a wood burning fireplace.
And how about the box, the original box that was behind the front door, is that gonna be raised as well?
No.
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 Okay.
No, it's, it remains intact.
Mr. Chairman, oh, hold on. Is that on view here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, uh.
Keep going.
Robert, are you, are you done with your presentation?
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Robert Woodson?
Hang on a second. Hang on a second, Woody, are you, are you done with your presentation?
Unless there's more questions.
Yeah, we'll probably, questions, so what we're gonna do is we're going to go through, I'm gonna start, and then it'll be Jeff, Chuck, Ruth Ann, and then Vic asking questions, okay? Uh, yes, Woody, what can I do for you?
Woody? Uh, okay. The question I've had is what's gonna be actually preserved, as Chuck was just referring to, of the existing wing of the house, from the foundation all the way up to the roof? What's gonna be left, how's this actually gonna be done? Cause it hasn't been clear.
George, do you wanna talk about that?
Yes, but just to, yes, but to clarify the question, do you mean on the century portion? Cause I guess that, well, the answer, I can answer both, on the nineteenth century portion, all of it, because it's not being altered. But on the nineteen fifties portion, it's this, the, the foundation walls and the framing up to a point and are gonna be kept. And the walls are gonna be sort of framed above it. So they would be cut down a little bit with a new plate foot and then they would, new framing would come up back again. If that makes any sense.
No, it doesn't. Would the first floor remain? The first floor deck structure, would that remain in place?
Yeah, there, there's a basement underneath the fifties addition that will stay. And the deck will stay. And then the walls above it would just get cut down to three foot six. So they would be like a cripple wall, and then you would be built above that.
So we're, we're reusing, we're reusing, and we're reusing the chimney and we're reusing the, the, we are trying to reuse as much as possible, obviously for expenses more than anything, but also because it's an existing structure that really, you know, it, it's in the right line. It's just, you know, at, not at the right vol- height volume.
So again, would the fir-, would the existing first floor remain, would just be lifted in place?
Yes.
And a new cripple wall put in under?
It would be built above it.
Is, there's multiple existing first floors?
The choices, the choices with, the foundation and the, the foundation and thicker, the choices would be used because they're running in the right direction. So all you have to do is increase, um, you can build above, you can build a new additional wood floor above that at a higher level.
Okay. So how about the roof, the roof would be completely removed and a new roof added above?
Yeah, you have to, you have to, right, you have to remove the roof.
On the, on the additions section.
Just on the fifties.
The original house isn't touched.
Right, you have to remove the roof, cause it's not at the right level.
That's being raised, uh, a little over three feet.
Three foot six and a half inches, it's three foot six, yeah.
How about the perimeter walls, would they remain in place?
To the greatest extent as possible, if you ask that.
The, the, the place, if you look at the plan, the place where the perimeter walls are changed is the back of the house, it's not, not in the front door, it's the back, that back.
Okay.
Anything further, Woody?
No, not now.
Uh, Vicki? Nick? Uh, so I really just had one question, um, which was, as I write, you could tear this house down and build a conforming structure, correct?
Uh. You could, I mean, but we really liked the house, I mean, we don't, we don't want to tear it down, that's the whole point.
Right, and, and so your, your, your hardship in your variance application is really to preserve this historic structure in the, in the, in the construction style of, of that here?
We, we spent eleven months living at the Avalon, waiting for a house in downtown Durian to open up that was an historical structure that we could renovate. We, 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 I grew up in an eighteen hundreds house. I cherish, you know, I'm an architect and designer by trade and I want to preserve this house.
Yeah, we, we would feel bad if we, we would, we would never knock it down. And if, and, you know, if, if eventually the house were sold and somebody else knocked it down, yeah, we would feel bad about that.
We, we want to do what's right.
Under- understood. Okay, that, that was really my, my basic question, um, I think we said, uh, Jeff, you're up next? Jeff, we don't have any audio for you.
Hold on, let me see if I can figure this out. Okay, how about now? Thank you. All right, Jeff Williams again, um, just a couple of clarification questions. Is, is this, uh, are you still hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, uh, Rebecca, Ms. Morrison, is, is this the exact same plans that you originally presented back in February?
No, they've been, they've been modified. We, we really worked with the town, um, Marion, um, for a really good five weeks to try to incorporate things that she felt were really important with the house. Um, again, we changed the, um, the stairs so that there was one less, we graded the front lawn, we, um, really worked at changing the mullions and the windows to make sure that they were, they matched the historical accuracy of the, the existing. Um, we added the, um, the columns are different in the front, um, we added the, the detail, um, behind the columns.
Yeah.
Um, we put the, the tiebacks in, we made sure that the shutters were exactly appropriate. We changed the type of the windows on the side, so, no, it's not. We, we really spent five weeks to try to make it exactly the way that she thought was more historically accurate and appropriate.
I understand, thank you, and I, and I note, I note those changes. The, the reason I clarify that, uh, for the record is because as I look through the file, uh, there are a litany of letters, uh, supporting your application, which is great. Uh, the issue that I have with regard to the submission of those letters at this point, as a matter of record, is that they're based on your February plans and not on April, I'm sorry, excuse me, May, uh, May plans. But I wanted to note that for the record, uh, just so everybody knows that. I don't see any letters other, other than the instructions being followed that were given by Marion herself, which I think are terrific, but just for the record, the letters that are in the record are not, um, reflective of the plans or submitted to that. Um, I'm also, um, Chuck, I kinda missed your question on relative to the house size. I believe I heard you say, how big is the house? And the, um, architect, I guess, George, responded that the parlor level was six hundred square feet. Uh, first question is, what level is the parlor level? Can we just go basement, first floor, second floor, third floor, please? No parlor?
Uh, the, the addition is, for the record, just to clarify, I was stating the amount of addition on those floors.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, okay, good.
And parlor, would, parlor, parlor level, level would be first in your language, so basement first slash parlor second. So it's the first floor that has, uh, uh, six hundred and seventy square foot addition and then the basement has five hundred and ten square foot addition. And going back to the question that was previous to this one, relative to what you see on the screen right now, there's no addition, it's, it's behind the house.
I understand.
Okay.
Um, thank you. And did, uh, that's really all I have for clarification questions at this time, thank you.
Chuck, you're on.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mike, uh, Chuck DeLuca again. Uh, I, I've asked all my questions, I think I understand the, uh, proposal, thank you.
Ruth Ann, do you have any questions?
I'm fine.
Hey, Vic, I think we're down to you.
I'm fine, I'm good.
Okay, no further questions, Woody, do you have any further questions? Did you get the clarity you needed on what's gonna be, remain and what's gonna disappear?
Okay. Sufficient for now.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Uh, seeing no one step forward, we'll, uh, go ahead and close the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to calendar number three, twenty twenty. Uh, Mark Lebo on behalf of Connell and Lifton. If you're here for that presentation, please come forward.
Yes, hello.
Hello, Mark.
Can, can who? Hi, everyone, um, first, we'd like to, uh, thank you all for, uh, taking, taking this opportunity and using the, uh, this forum or platform to hold this meeting. I know it's kind of a little awkward and difficult for everybody, but hopefully we'll be able to get through this and just wanted to thank you for, for your efforts for that. Um, I don't know how far back, do, do we wanna have a little recap of where we left off in February? I think it might be valuable to just review quickly the four elements of the application that we're, uh, we're, we're talking about. Um, if, if, if you feel you need a little refresher, we can, we can walk through that. And also just to, uh, let you know that the, the couple of additional documents and information that you had requested at the, uh, February meeting. Uh, wait, oh, sorry, Tim, I'm here and myself, I can't, um. So, yes, so let's, let's start with a, a brief overview, I'm sorry, I'm, it's a little awkward and new to me as well, so just please bear with me. I am going to get the slides up from the, the January, uh, meeting, I mean, the, uh, February meeting, rather. Okay, can, can you guys see that? Are you guys seeing anything?
Not yet, Mark.
Okay. I, I have the thing open. Is that on your end, Fred, or mine?
It is not on my end. Did you get the message box to share the screen?
Oh, wait, uh. Screen. Share, okay, got it.
Yeah, good.
Okay. So now I just have to find. Oh, boy. Struggling a little bit here, sorry. I'm not.
Yeah, we can see you, Mark, we can see your screen.
Do your time.
Oh, you know what, I, I opened the, uh, I opened the PDF too early, so just, I have to reopen it now, sorry. How's that? Could, you see that now, right?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, good.
I would just quickly interject here, just to make sure that all participants that are speaking, please announce your name, uh, for the record.
Okay. So if, if you recall, there were, there were four. So if, if you recall, there were, there were four elements to our application. The, the first having to do with a small sliver of the new addition in the back that was going to be forward of the front yard setback. That would be in this area here. I'm not sure if you could see where I'm pointing, but the, the second part of the application was the expansion of the half-story into a full-story over the existing original footprint of, of that portion of the house. And just to remind you that of that footprint, of ninety-plus percent of that footprint is forward of the front yard setback. The third part of the application was the front portico where we were just gonna take it and re-center it on, on the central chimney here. This, this over here on the left is the existing, uh, floor plan. The, the large is the, the proposed floor plan. So that gets re-centered. It's important to know that it gets no closer to the street than this right front corner of the house. It's a little, gets a little closer than the existing portico, but no closer than, than the, the main part of the house. The fourth element of the application, which just to point out, was made in good faith and was not put in here to be a negotiation, is the, uh, the AC units. Now, the AC units were, we, we thought this would be a good location for them for, you know, efficiency purposes. Um, and, and again, just to remind you that any or all parts of our application can be approved or denied in part. So, um, that said, that, that's kind of gets us back to, uh, just explaining where we were with the, uh, with the various elements of, of the application. So when we left the meeting at February twelfth, you had asked for two things. You had asked that we do some exploratory surgery on the house, uh, bust a couple of holes in the walls, whatever we needed to do to be able to do, give you better confirmation and assurances that this project could be carried out, uh, the way we're proposing. Uh, you expressed some concern about driving past the house someday and seeing it that, you know, demolished to the ground. We can assure you that is not what's going to happen here now. And, and we were, we were quite certain of it in February. We're absolutely certain of it now. Um, you, you have a, a beefed-up structural report with some schematic diagrams of how we're gonna achieve that. The second thing that you asked for was, um, more detail and, and, and a more compelling and detailed argument of why we felt that what we were proposing was the minimum adjustment to accomplish, uh, our, our goal. And, uh, Kurtley Cameron, our architect, is here tonight to speak to that. You have a report from her as well. I hope that you've all been able to, uh, read and review these materials and that, understanding that they're here to answer any questions that you may have about it. So before I turn, turn the presentation over to Kurtley or Tim, um, I'd just like to ask if, if you have any general or overall, uh, you know, overview questions of me that I could, uh, clarify for you if there's any confusion or, or things you need clarification on.
Yeah, um, Mark, can you just go through and state for the record what your hardship is? Uh, and why it's, why this is the minimum adjustment necessary?
Well, yes, the, the hardships are that, you know, the, the house was born, but born, built in, uh, you know, seventeen thirty, before Darien was. Um, there was an addition in seventeen ninety. You have ninety-plus percent of the footprint of the house forward of the front yard setback. So it's likely that you could do nothing with the outcome before you. Um, the, the minimum adjustment aspect of it is, you know, we have a lot of safety and, um, certain issues, you know, that we have, we have two very difficult. The stairway between the first and second, or floor is, is extremely dangerous. People have already fallen. Uh, same thing with the basement stairs, the stairs from the first floor down to the basement. There is actually, at the foot of the stairs, a lally column that if somebody falls down the stairs, they're gonna just slam right into this column. Um. People are bumping their heads on the second floor all the time. On the first floor and the original portions of, of the house, the floorboards are uneven. Everything really needs to be brought up to snuff to be, um, you know, to, to be, to provide a safe and comfortable home for today's style of living. Um, but as I said, I mean, Kurtley Cameron is here with us. She can speak with regard to all the, uh, the architectural, uh, elements. And, and again, Tim, Tim de Barlemeo is here to speak to you regarding, uh, any, any of the structural, uh, issues and questions you may have with respect to that. Um, so again, I, I would say it's the, the fact that the house was built before zoning, changes to the zoning regulations over the course of time, and, um, and, and, and safety and building code issues that we, we'd like to improve upon.
Okay, so the, the previous application that we just, we just listened to was, uh, you know, had the same concerns about the change in zoning regulations. And their request for variance was based on preserving the historical nature of the property. Your variance request is based on the safety of the occupants of the, uh, property.
Well, uh, let me respond to, to that with this. When we were before you in February, we were told that historic preservation was not a concern of yours. So while that was one of the items noted in our item K, we backed off on that a little bit because of what you guys had stated. However, it certainly is, I don't know if you want to call it historic preservation, but yeah, I mean, we want to, we want to keep that central, uh, chimney and fireplace and kind of make that the centerpiece of the home. And there's, there's other elements of it that we absolutely want to preserve. Uh, but, but as I stated, we, we were, when we left the meeting in February, we were left with the impression that that was not within your purview. And that ultimately, and, and please forgive me if I misstate this, but basically said, well, look, if you want to go ahead and tear it down, then, you know, historic preservation isn't our, our thing.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So my name's Kurtley Cameron, architect. Um, I just want to reiterate, Mark, thanks for seeing us in this format tonight. We're very appreciative of, of you making this work. Um, I wanted to address the question, I'll go right to the question about the minimum adjustments from a design standpoint. Um, I think that the conversation that we had, uh, at the February meeting was around which aspects of this historic home we were prioritizing. And I think that what we said then, and I will recap very quickly now and then move on to the minimum adjustment question, because our goal tonight is to answer what you asked for more information about, was that the, the renovation direction that we went was based on renovating the old home into a way that Mary Connell and Tyler could live in the old home. That we felt that a lot of the most important historic aspects were actually on the interior. And that they wanted the existing huge, beautiful historic fireplace to be the center of their home. And we have looked at ways to preserve the fireplace, the chimney, the hearthstones, the original floorboards that still exist, as many of the original windows, including all the original windows on the first floor, and trim work throughout, keeping the exposed beams that you see now and actually hopefully exposing more of the original beams. There are certainly elements of the exterior of the house that we are keeping, but we also absolutely recognize that the changes that we're proposing on the exterior are significant. And we feel that those changes are needed to allow this house to continue to be lived in in a reasonable and safe and energy-efficient way for a family, um, in a way that hopefully will have this house be relevant to the way people live today and be prepared to maintain it into the future. If I could just address really quickly that minimum adjustment question for each of these hardships. Um, Mark mentioned first the hardship of the sliver of the footprint in the back of the house. I, my sense was from the first meeting, this wasn't the one that was necessarily, you know, of concern to you all. But, you know, in order to add on to the back of the house, given the location ninety percent within the setback, that sliver made it possible to add on to the back of the house. Um, second, the front porch. The proposal that we have actually moved the front porch, which was very early, but not actually original, to the center of the house. We propose replicating the current design of that portico. It is four feet, nine inches deep off the house. And the proposal, I, I would say what we were, what we were using was, we would like to replicate what's there. It does not increase the non-conformity, but is that the absolute minimum? No, if you were to say we would prefer to have that, I think what we were looking at is twelve inches less deep. So it would be twelve inches further from the road. That, you know, we would be happy to live with that. I think that we certainly don't want a portico that is shallower than when the front door is open, but I think we could reduce it from what it is today. The reason we were proposing four foot nine is that matches the historic one that is there today. It is also not the defining point in the house, as Mark pointed out, for the setback from the front street, because that is the corner of the house. But that porch could come back to three foot nine, which I think would be the minimum that would still literally work from a functionality standpoint of covering, you know, the doorway and the step. The main one obviously is the bulk on the front of the house. And it's, it's the front facade and it's the raising of the roof within the setback. So just, again, I'll be brief because this is in the report that you have in front of you and then I'm happy to answer any questions. But the reason that that height, which is the proposed addition is raised, or the proposed goal is to raise that roof three feet, eleven inches from nineteen foot seven to twenty-three foot six. And there's a few things driving that as the minimum adjustment. The first one is that we did not want the ridge of the addition in the back to be higher than the front of the house. We did not want to be able to see it from the road and we did not want it to dominate, overshadow, or be larger than the original part of the house. Um, further, we preferred not to have it be one monolithic ridgeline from the driveway, which is actually the most visible part of that elevation. It is currently difficult to really see the front of the house. Obviously, that's partly plantings. We are open to your input on plantings, but they're screening, they're screening for privacy, they're screening for noise. Um, and the way they are there today, you know, it's very hard to see the front. What you see more is from the driveway. Um, so from a design standpoint, we really wanted the addition to be secondary to the original part of the house and to step down. We're stepping it down eighteen inches. We tried elevations with less than that, and it really doesn't create that distinction. So that's where that number came from. And what's driving the eighteen inches is a minimum height for a new addition. Um, we wanted to keep the original second floor and those floor joists and that plate height. We're not changing it. We're not taking out that floor. So that gives us a datum for a second floor addition that is based on the existing house. And from there, we created two, I think, modest-sized kids' bedrooms with a bathroom. And the knee walls are just at three foot three. And when you bring that new peak up, it is only the thirteen feet in the middle of a twenty-four-foot-wide addition that has a head height of six foot eight or higher. Now, there are shed dormers to try to get some more head height, so you can walk around those rooms and you can get some light in there. But if we had that ridge any lower, you could not get a full six-foot-eight interior door from the bedrooms into the hallway and into the bathroom. So just from a design and more technical standpoint, that's how we arrived at that ridge height. Um, you know, I think to just walk you through the rest of the new materials, I might turn it over to Tim to address the questions about structure and making sure that what we are proposing would not require taking down the existing structure. So I'm happy to answer any more questions on that, but otherwise I'll turn it over to Tim.
I have one question. Uh, Vic Capalupo. Ms. Cameron. The, um.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Hi, this is Tim de Barlemeo. So.
Oh, Tim, you know, I'm answering one question.
Okay.
Hi, again. Um, the, the addition on the left-hand side as you face the, uh, the house that has a little sliver?
Yes.
Why can't that be pushed up to have no sliver? Pushed back, I'm sorry.
The sliver is off the back of the house. So when you're looking at the house from the front of the street, that sliver's not visible. I just want to make sure I understand the question, um.
If you're, if you're on the phone, if you're on. The sliver's on the front of the house.
The sliver of the new addition that is within the setback is basically the southwest corner of the existing house, which is not along the front of the road. It is, Tim, if you could show it, exactly, it's right there. That's the sliver that's in the setback. Because the property line cuts through, and we do have a site plan in the materials, obviously, that were submitted in February. We didn't resubmit it as additional material, but it's marked on that.
Okay. I'm looking at something different then, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry for any confusion that I can't pull that up easily. This is a challenging format. Well, there's a site plan that shows where the... Any other questions? Obviously, I can come back to this, but... Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Tim to talk about the structural report that's in your materials.
Okay, um, if everyone can hear me, I just... Yeah, my mic should be on. Um, so what we did was, at the, uh, request of the board, there was concern. And I'll, I'll state it as clearly as I can that, um, the concern is that we, we stand in front of you and we make commitments and promises of what can be done. As we sat, you know, I stood before you last time and said, you know, we can, uh, make these structural modifications without significantly altering the, the, the building. Um, and, uh, the concern was that, yeah, people say that, and when it comes time for construction, uh, that all goes out the window. Um, so you asked us to go in and do, uh, sort of a deeper dive and, and, and do some exploratory investigations of the structure. Uh, and, uh, and it was a great suggestion, because we did that and we learned an awful lot about the structure. Uh, I was able to confirm our original position and, and yes, we can do this, uh, uh, without demolishing the structure or significantly altering it. Um, what we end up doing is strategically locating certain support points, uh, throughout the structure so that it is a selective retrofitting from the, from the roof through the second floor down to the foundation. Uh, it was, it was a great exercise to have, uh, to, to do. And, um, so again, that was, uh, that was a direct request from you folks. And, uh, I thought it was, um, well, well worthwhile. Uh, so right now, the holes are still open, uh, in the Lifton's house. Um, and, uh, you know, looking forward to, to, uh, moving that ahead and, and, and letting them have, be able to, to fix that. So we, we left it open with anticipation that we're gonna need to have those open during construction. Um, so what we also did is, is sort of forced us to lay out the framing and, and here's the, the, well, Mark just brought up that, uh, that board that shows the roof layout and, and you'll see, and Mark, I don't know if you can point out some of these posts, but around the perim, around the perimeter of the building, there's some, there's certain posts that, that land on the exterior walls or some that land in the interior that were specifically located. Sort of lost it there. Uh, located to, uh, to land in, in locations down below. That's the, and, and, and right there, there, there on the stairs, uh, on that bearing wall there and on the opposite side, those posts are strategically, uh, located to land on support points. those posts are strategically located to land on support points below. So this was a great exercise to do and we're very happy with it. So I hope that answers your questions. And the last thing, I guess, is if there is further concern that once construction begins, there's no controls in place. You know, we can have controls in place as part of my supplemental report. I introduced the idea of, you know, requiring the contractor to not demolish anything until the architect or engineer reviews it. So that way, there's some continuity between what we are saying here tonight and when it actually happens. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I got a question for Mark. You mentioned the AC units. Are they in a conforming location? Mark Laboue?
I'm sorry, Mike, I missed what you said. I was, I had the speakers muted. Could you repeat that?
Were the AC units in a conforming location?
Currently, the existing units are not. Where they're proposed to be, they will be more conforming. They will conform with the accessory structure setback. The problem is the distance between the house and the units, not with respect to the setback. But as I said earlier, if this, you know, if this was a... We didn't put this in to be a negotiating point and the four elements of the application can all stand, you know, pretty much on their own. So if you felt that you could not approve this, then I think we could and will find a strictly conforming location. I don't think the regulation about five-foot separation for something to become, to be considered an accessory structure and thus subject to a lesser setback, that I think stemmed from more of a building fire code thing. And at the time that regulation was written, I don't believe that, you know, central air conditioning was commonplace. And I don't think that that regulation was written to apply to AC units, especially when we could have them behind the house but five feet away, yet still ten feet from the property line. So who does it really protect? If by moving them to just a different location, not within five feet of the house, they can still be ten feet from the property line the way we have them. But again, as I said, where we're proposing, it's more conforming than they are now. But if you felt that this was something that you could not, in good faith, approve, then, you know, we will find another place for them, but...
And good evening, everyone. This is Tyler Lipton speaking. I just want to reiterate a couple of points that Mark made, which is, one, that the existing location is not conforming. Two, the proposed location is more non-conforming.
No, no, better.
Is, I'm sorry, is more conforming, excuse me, is more conforming, better conforming. Three, that the proposed location is not visible from the street. And four, that the neighbor who sits closest to the proposed location has written us a very strong letter of support for our project. And lastly, simply that a conforming location as proposed would create an extremely inefficient energy system for the house.
Okay, and I think it's worth pointing out, Mark, that you are removing an entry that's not conforming and you're moving the AC unit to a more conforming location.
Yes, the entry on the west side of the house, the driveway side, is proposed to be removed, the covered entry, yes.
Okay. I think I've asked all my questions. Jeff, do you have any question on this application?
No, Mike, I don't. I think I'm good.
Okay. Chuck, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Chuck DeLucco, what's the plan, if any, with respect to all the overgrown plantings in front of the house, which I think, in my view, sort of detract from the street view?
Hi, so this is Mary Connell Lipton. I can respond to that. As you may have noted, if you've driven by our house, we have done a nice job with landscaping, one part, and left the part that's right in front of the house undone, always knowing that we wanted to do a renovation. So we didn't want to invest in a bunch of landscaping prior to having a bunch of construction there. But I think we, in fact, have not gotten to landscape architecture, but certainly the intention is to improve that and not have a bunch of overgrown bushes. So if the board has a viewpoint that they want us to plant something tall but attractive, we'll take that suggestion. If you want us to plant something short but attractive, we'll take that suggestion. The point is, we just haven't touched that landscaping, knowing that we were going to do a big construction project at some point. So I acknowledge that it's a little overgrown at this point.
All right, thank you.
That brings us to Ruth Ann.
I'm fine.
Okay, that brings us to Vic.
Good on the scent.
Okay, is the applicant have anything further?
We do not. We really appreciate you making time and accommodating this format. Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would... Is that a no? That's a no. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. First my agenda, Woody. Oh, shoot, Woody, I didn't ask you if you had any questions.
It's okay. Thank you, it's okay.
All right, sorry about that. Let's go ahead and close that hearing. We are, the Oxford application has been withdrawn, so we are on to deliberations and/or decisions. I'll remind everyone that during this part of the process that the public is not allowed to comment. And so if you could please keep your mics muted during this part of the process, that would be super helpful to us. So we will start with... We'll start with two dash 2020 Morrison application. And we'll follow that same order of people. So it would be myself, Jeff, Chuck, Ruth Ann, and then Vic. On the Morrison application, I think they've done a really good job of, you know, going back and doing some of the things that we've asked them to do. That I struggled with this application quite a bit, but was confirmed that the keeping in harmony with the neighborhood does apply to historic structures. And, you know, town council was able to confirm that. So I got a little bit more comfortable with this application. You know, I don't really have a lot to say. I think they worked well with the town historian. I think they worked really well with the ARB, which I don't know that they even had to do, but they did it anyways. So I'm going to leave my comments at that and we'll go on to Jeff.
I'm with you, Mike. I'm okay. I really don't have any comments, questions, or concerns at this point. I'm okay.
Chuck?
Yeah, let's talk a little bit more, Mike, about the historical aspect of this. You know, if we look at it strictly, as we've been looking at other applications in terms of hardships and adjustments, it's difficult for me to say this would beat that criteria. But yet, there seems to be a thought, at least on the part of town council, that we have to take into account the historical aspect of applications. Is that what you were told?
Yeah, it's the concept of it being in keeping with the neighborhood. So, you know, when we look at front yard setbacks, Jeff, you and I were surprised by this. We're supposed to look at a common plan of development for a neighborhood, where you've got a group of historic homes that are all trying to replicate some era and you've got a common plan of development. Then they can use that historic nature of the property as a hardship. And so they've got the underlying hardship of the zoning regulations changed, but council said, look, that's not enough, they need something else. And that argument of it being in keeping with the neighborhood is a valid argument, is what town council confirmed literally as we were getting on this call.
Because it's not really an historic preservation. I mean, it's an expansion of perhaps an historic home. I mean, if we wanted to have a historic preservation, we would go back to the way the house was when it was first constructed, I would think. So I think they've done a good job too. I mean, don't get me wrong, I just want to, you know, understand intellectually, you know, how we're getting to where we might be getting. So the analysis there would be, hey, listen, it's a neighborhood that has some historic value. The town historian thinks it's great. The ARB thinks it's terrific. And, you know, it will enhance and be more in conformance with some of the other homes on the street. I mean, so if that's basically the analysis, and I would agree, yeah, then, okay, we can grant the variance. But absent something along those lines, you know, we don't meet, you know, the strict criteria to which we're supposed to be held. I'm not saying no, I'm just...
Yeah, no, I don't disagree.
Talking about it.
Yeah, it's a tough way, sorry, Michael Metter again. It's a tough way to look at an application, which is not a way we'd look at applications. You want me to move on and reserve some time to come back to you?
Yeah, let me hear what everybody else has to say.
Ruth Ann, you're next.
Hi, Ruth Ann Ramsey. I applaud these people for trying so hard to take into consideration the really important historical aspect of that street. I mean, it's just the most historical place in Darien neighborhood. So I'm for it.
Okay, Vic?
You know, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with what Chuck is struggling with. This is news to me that the historical nature of the house should be considered a hardship and that we should be considering the fit of the house within a neighborhood. But I'm struggling with that. And Woody, can you let me know, Woody, on Prospect, we denied a few houses in terms of the length of the porch and tried to stick within our eight-foot kind of thing.
Yes, there was one that, I think Twenty-One Prospect, that didn't have a porch and they added one and you held to your typical eight-foot maximum width. That was in 2015 or so. But we haven't had too many other applications for the block.
I don't think they made the same argument that's being made here.
The argument of the historical nature?
Well, I think they did try to make an historic argument, but it was a very different style house. It was not the Italianate style that this design is based on.
Yeah, no, I think the applicant's done a really nice job. I think that the letters of support, although Jeff, you point out that they were prior, you know, I don't think the changes to plans were so material that they would turn around and say, no, I want to prove it now and be in favor of it. I don't know. I'm thinking with the application, if you think it's not livable, it doesn't get torn down. Don't make it livable.
Okay.
Mike, you broke up a little bit.
Yeah.
Mike, sorry, I just said, look, with a house like this, if we don't allow them to do something to make it usable space, they're going to tear the house down. And it would be a shame to lose a historic structure like that.
I don't disagree with that here.
Chuck?
All right, listen, I'll go along with it. You know, it's a close call for me, but I think under the circumstances, as I weigh everything, I'm in favor of it, including the wooden steps.
Yeah, Woody, did you give us any proposed stipulations for this?
I think Marion Castile and Liz Geiger put together a pretty comprehensive report. And I think they asked for a bunch of conditions. So you want to consider whether to include those. And then...
Woody, I can barely hear you.
And then it might be useful to try to clarify what's going to be preserved of that wing, what you understood tonight to be the plan.
Did you get it?
I think if I can jump in, this is Jeff Williams. I think if I can jump in here. I think they were pretty clear it's a roof has to be remote. I think there is a little bit of uncertainty as to their ability to keep the perimeter walls, quote unquote, as best as they possibly could. You know, over the years, we've all heard that and you never really know what that means. But I don't disagree with Woody. I hate, you know, hate to see the same old thing happen with respect to, oh, here we go, and next thing you know, the house is down. Or a much larger portion than we had anticipated. So I wouldn't be opposed to that, but I'm not going to drill down on it. I'm done.
Excuse me, the ones where they said that we're talking about, where the house came down, were those houses on much older foundations than this one? I think they had like rubble foundations and... I just don't want to confuse that kind of mistake in destruction of a house. And then what we're dealing with here, where the foundation is really pretty solid and looking good.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to, this is Michael Metter, I'm going to make a motion to approve the application with stipulations that support not being closed, no further expansion support. Woody, I think prior to the issuance of a building permit, they need to provide from the detail of what they plan on keeping and what they plan on removing so that you have that in the file and you can hold them to that. Is there any need for appropriate screening?
Not that the foundation is now gone. We're not gone, I guess, the porch is extended.
Yeah, okay. I think that there was some lighting issues, Woody, that you mentioned, about a light season towards Prospect.
Well, it's always a question if you want to condition anything on landscaping or lighting, fencing, plantings. It's up to you.
I don't believe anything for planting. I think that the lighting fixtures are, you know, obviously not the size of mall. Any lighting fixtures under it.
Could you say that again? We couldn't hear you.
Michael, you're breaking up.
Uh, Chuck, could you mute? Sorry about that. Um, just that, uh, the lighting fixtures under the porch shouldn't be visible from the street. On the, on the ceiling of the porch. Does that make any sense? And that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There you go.
But the record show Ruth Ann Ramsey seconded the motion. All in favor of the motion? Either say aye or raise a no.
Could you, could you speak up?
Did you see my hand up in the air, Mike?
See there, Vic, we got Vic, okay.
Yeah, it looks like.
Mike, I wanna say one thing, you know, this, this is like sort of new territory for me, this historical, uh, considerations, uh, that, you know, in the future, when we deal with these, uh, I, particularly in this particular case, swayed by the recommendations of the town historian and also by the Architectural Review Board, which endorsed the historical nature of the, uh, of the renovations that are going forward. So for what that's worth, but I vote in favor.
Great, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think it makes it a lot easier when we've got ARB and Marion Castell in agreement with the plans. Okay, on to deliberations for, uh, the lift-in application. Um, you know, I, I, I wanted to make the distinction, and I think, let me first start by saying, I think, uh, it was helpful to, to everybody, uh, involved with this project to have the engineer actually do that exploratory work. I think, um, you know, we've run into too many situations where we've been told things are gonna be preserved and they, and they end up not being preserved. I think that that's, puts us in a difficult position. Um, and so I, I appreciate the applicant doing that. This is a different application from, from the other one. I, you know, when I first saw them, I saw, I sort of put them part and parcel as, as sort of the same type of application, the same arguments for hardship, et cetera. But, but, you know, this is really an argument that zoning regs changed. We still have that argument, but that, the, the underlying issue is a safety issue. Uh, and that the, um, removal of some non-conformity, um, makes this, you know, creates a hardship here. I don't know how, you know, I, I'm, so I've struggled with this application, Chuck, like you struggled with the other one. Um, I think safety is an issue that we've, we've traditionally looked at as a hardship. Um, and certainly the reduction of, uh, non-conformities on a property, uh, you know, is, is the basis for granting a variance. So, um, I will, uh, I'll open it up to you guys and, and, and hear your thoughts. Uh, we got Jeff Williams first.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Um, no, I'm, I'm actually okay with this, although I am going to after growing up in that area, since I was a little boy and looking at that house on a daily basis as I went to the high school. Um, I'm gonna want a screening plan. I, I would like to stipate a, a, on a screening plan to that house. It, it, it's been overgrown and in, not a very attractive, uh, site for many, many years, many years. So I, Woody, I'd like a stipulation, uh, plan on, I mean, a screening plan on that, please. Otherwise I have no, uh, otherwise I'm okay.
Okay, Chuck, do you wanna?
Yeah, it's, you know, back in February, I looked at these as, you know, similarly, uh, uh, similar types of applications with historical preservation, renovations and so forth. This is not that. Um, you know, I've read from, I read the, uh, letters from the historical society woman and, uh, she seemed to indicate that this is not an historical renovation. Uh, so I don't think that that, that element is something that we're gonna consider. I mean, there are some preserved portions of the house, but they're all on the interior. Uh, and there doesn't seem to be much done in, in terms of the exterior besides maybe a few windows that, uh, are gonna be, are gonna be remaining. I don't know, it's a lot of bulk in a setback, uh, putting, putting a sec, you know, another story up within the setback area so close to the street. Um, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say, but I, I, I'm, you know, I'm not really appreciating the, the, the safety issues as it pertains to the second story. Uh, so I, I'll, I'll reserve some time after I get everybody else.
Okay, Ruth Ann?
I don't really have anything to say. I'm ju, I'm just listening. I'm kind of okay with it, but I'll listen.
Okay, Vic?
I guess I'm struggling on a couple of fronts. Um, the hardship that we're proposing is essentially a safety hardship. Um, I'm not sure I'm buying that. Um, and also if, if the reason for pro-major of the house, this doesn't. This kind of puts everything in the front where it should, where the historical nature of the front is. And also, since they have such a buildable area in the back, and they presented last time that they do have options to move into the back, um, I don't understand what, what exactly is the basis of what we're doing here, so. They did say they have the explored options to go in the back, they can do that, they just didn't like it.
Okay.
My thoughts.
Yep. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I certainly, I, I really wish Marion had, um, seen some of the, the responses to the concerns, um, because I thought they were compelling responses. Uh, but it's, it's, it's hard. I, I mean, when, when you're dealing with the oldest house in Darien, is that, is that accurate, Woody?
Uh, pretty close.
You know, it's, it's hard to sort of give them a variance to, to put a second story on that, that was never there, uh, in college historical preservation. Uh, so Vic, I, I kind of agree with you. Um, you know, I, I, I struggle with the safety aspect of the, I mean, I understand it's an old house, but, you know, um, I don't know, I, I, I struggle with it. Chuck, you have any else there?
No, I, I don't think so. I, I, I think I'm in the same camp as Vic and perhaps you.
Um, okay, uh, you know, unfortunately, I think, I'm, I, I would make a motion to deny. Um, I mean, there is a, there's a large buildable area in the back of the structure. Um, reductions in the non-conformities are very minor compared to, um, compared to what they're, what they're proposing. Um, I really just don't like the fact that, that the town historian isn't in favor of the project. That sort of doesn't sit well with me. Um, so that, that's my motion. Uh, Woody, they can always reapply for our next hearing with maybe some updated notes from Marion or, uh, something like that correct, or is this denied with prejudice?
Well, I think you have to handle this application one way or the other as a prejudice decision, yes.
Me, but they can still come back with the, with a similar application?
Sure, oh yeah, they could come back with a different design, yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone else want to make a different motion?
Just to add something, I think if, if they do decide to build whatever they want to in the back, it does preserve the historical nature of the front, which I think that's what the basis of the history of the house is. So I'd like to see them do something towards the back and preserve whatever there is in the front.
Okay, uh, so, so I, I made a motion, uh, to deny. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mike.
Okay, for the record, uh, Chuck DeLucas seconded the motion. Uh, by show of hands, all in favor? Uh, Woody, it's a unanimous decision?
To deny.
To deny it, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Did you have something else, Woody?
Yeah, we have some other business, please?
Yes, okay.
Do you have the agenda there?
Yep. Uh, that was Steve and Chuck, uh, the same, same group. Chuck or Jeff, did you have a chance?
Yeah, they were fine by me.
Jeff, you're muted.
Anybody see me say what I just said? I'll be in here. I was gonna make a motion to approve it in the February twelfth minute.
Okay, Jeff, Jeff made a motion to approve. Michael Metter will second, all in favor? Unanimous? We've got a six-month extension for this cycle. Woody, you're muted.
Am I?
Nope, you're all set.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, thirty Fairmead Road has had a troubled, uh, recent history with some things. They tore down the existing house, but the owner has been unable to start new construction, had some changes in her life, and is now selling the property. They would like an extension, which expired back in April, I think, to just keep their prior plans and approval alive and allow a, a new owner to carry through with the same design. So they're looking for another six-month extension that would carry them to, uh, I think it's, uh, November. So they need an extension.
Woody, I'm sorry, I, I, I don't, hang on, hang on. I don't see the address of this house in my agenda. What, what, what house are you talking about?
It's, uh, number two in other business. Number two in other business.
Say it again, come on.
Thirty Fairmead Road is asking for a six-month extension of their prior granted variance. Says for a replacement house.
Yeah, I understand. I, I apologize, okay. Hang on just one second. Mike Metter, what's the address of this house?
Thirty Fairmead.
Fairmead, okay, I know where we are, thank you. Don't need to know.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Fine, I'll second.
Jeff Williams seconded.
Jeff Williams, yeah, yeah.
Ruth Ann, are you in favor?
Sure.
Like unanimous?
I don't know which way to put my hand.
Um, review the proposed state statutes, do we have those, Woody?
Uh, previously they were distributed. Uh, we can do that again and maybe pick that up again next time. Speaking of which, can we add a couple of things to the agenda? I know you wanted to talk about how this process is working. And then we need to
Yeah.
set up a follow-up meeting in a couple of weeks. And we'd like to nail that down with you tonight. So.
All right, so let's, let's talk about how, how you think tonight went. Any, anybody have any issues, any struggles? Did we like it, not like it? We'll start with, uh, Jeff, we'll go around the horn again.
Great, I was, I was trying to raise my hand. Yeah, I have a, um, a request that in future meetings done this way, that the presenter be able to use their, I don't, you guys, hi Fred, you can't, Fred, young glad you're still there. I want them to use their cursor and the plan and show me and put that cursor, just like Mark LeBeau did tonight. He had his cursor and he moved around and he pointed to things. Mrs. Morrison did not, and it was a little bit more difficult to follow. So if there's some way that we can, uh, I, I don't wanna say mandate, Mike, but, uh, but encourage them to be able to point to what they're talking about, makes it a lot easier for me because I, I guess I'm just not sophisticated enough to know what a parlor, parlor level is.
Okay, Chuck?
Yeah, um, I, I thought it worked pretty well, uh, better than I thought it would. Uh, and I think I understood, uh, you know, um, every point that was made, but Jeff makes an excellent point. I mean, if, if they, cause the drawing time when they show up on the screen are kind of small. Uh, uh, and they have a pointer and pointing to the various areas, but when they try to describe, you know, these very small drawings in words, it's hard to follow. So I think Jeff's point is, is really a good one. We should encourage people to do that.
Ruth Ann, any thoughts?
No, I'm, I mean, I agree with what's been said, but nothing original.
Okay, uh, Vic?
Uh, nothing to add. I, I, I thought it went, uh, much more than I really expected. I think it was pretty good.
Okay.
I agree.
Uh, Fred, anything you wanna add? I'll do the fact that I maybe against myself ever.
I think it went reasonably well. Um, it, you know, the, the, the first time you're gonna hold a meeting in this format, there's, there's most certainly gonna be, uh, you know, some kinks and, uh, you know, that, that need to be worked out in the process. But, you know, as, as, as you move forward, uh, in this format, I think you'll find that things just get, uh, easier and, um, you know, you re, you really start to establish a flow to these meetings and, uh, it, you know, it, it really does get easier. But I think, I, I, you know, I, I think, I think things went relatively smoothly tonight.
I, I have one question I thought of, um, what about public comment? How is that working? How could that work? Um, are the neighbors notified that this is the way it's going to be and they need to sign in? Woody, you wanna take this or you want me to take?
All right.
Yeah, Woody, you wanna handle that, I, I, I can, I can speak to that as well.
If not, I can talk, talk to it. Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning and Zoning Director, I've been helping, uh, Ruth Ann and Woody through the meeting and sitting through the meeting. But basically, uh, your question, Vic, is, uh, the public. We've had four or five Planning and Zoning Commission meetings at which, uh, about half of them, members of the public have spoke and Mike absolutely did the right thing. Has anyone here from the public? Usually you have to give them an extra second or two to log in or to kind of unmute themselves. But we had at the most recent P and Z meeting, uh, a couple neighbors for Oxford School who, uh, one actually, who said, here's my comments, and everyone heard the comments and the architect and the commission were able to, uh, converse with the neighbor to understand their concerns. So certainly it, it is good. What's nice is with, uh, the names on the screen, you can got, get a sense if someone's in the room that's like right now, that's not a ZBA member, you can get a sense that there might be someone from the public there. But the public, one question has been, can a member of the public come in and sit in the room like Ruth Ann and Woody and I are right now? And the answer is, uh, yes, if they really want to, it's possible. Uh, we do have to social distance and make sure there's not more than five people in this. We do have to social distance and make sure there's not more than five people in this room, but that is certainly an option for members of the public, and we do note that, that the meeting is eight o'clock in Town Hall. The door is unlocked right out here outside Room 119. So, those who want to log in using GoToMeeting can. On the rare occasion, if an applicant or member of the public wants to show up, that's fine. We do ask that they give us some advance notice if possible, so we can make sure everyone's properly spread out. As you can see here, you know, we want to make sure that the chairs are far apart and we don't exceed any guidelines, which of course could change by the next time the ZBA needs. So, certainly, it's a good question, Vic.
Jeremy, are those instructions given in the public notice? How do they find out about that?
Well, certainly, the applicants are still required to notify neighbors. The governor's order, which allowed for this type of procedure, still requires neighbor notice. The neighbor notices are going out now regular mail, but everybody within a hundred feet is still getting notification of these meetings, what's going on. I think in almost every case, they invite people to call the office or email the office. So, folks can appear, but they can also go through GoToMeeting.
The meetings are, of course, also noticed on the website, on the ZBA portion of the website, as well as on the, as well as on the agenda that goes out. All the GoToMeeting details are included on the agenda and on the website, so the public certainly has an opportunity to, you know, to, you know, if they're beyond the 100 feet, then they don't get notified by mail. There's other avenues for them to become aware of these and join the community.
And one thing I want to mention, Vic, one new policy from the department, which is a result of the governor's orders, is on every single application, we have scanned and posted every item in the file on the town website. So, if you go to the town website, darianct.gov backslash ZBA pending applications, you will see exactly what's in our file. So, it gives everyone in the public an opportunity, because they can't get into the building, to see what's been submitted on every application. And that's gonna be a policy going forward.
No, Vic, go back, go back.
I haven't, okay. I understand what you're saying and how they get notified. I'm just asking, what do they, how do they understand the process of either coming into the City Hall or logging on to the website? Where do they get the website information on the City Hall idea?
There's a couple ways. One is through the applicants who've notified the neighbors with that information, and the other is on the town website, which on the agenda, I think you got a copy of the agenda, which specifically lays out the call-in numbers and things like that. So, that's been posted on the website.
Gotcha.
Jeremy, if I may, and how you doing, by the way?
Good, thank you.
I noticed you said these notices are going out regular mail. Obviously, they always go out certified mail. Why aren't they going out certified mail, number one, and number two, have we got a waiver for that? We're not gonna get appealed based on notices not certified?
My recollection was it was governor's order, I think it was 7B, Woody? I think it was 7B that said that notices can go out regular mail. I think what oftentimes, you know, for whatever reason, I would have expected people are a little more sensitive to certify and return receipt and things like that, so regular mail has been determined and seems to be working on it. I know for some of the recent hearings, we have had some neighbor input.
Fine, done. Thank you, Jeremy.
Sure.
Woody, the agenda that I got did not have, it just said to be a virtual GoToMeeting without the details, and it had the, you speak only into microphone here, the podium. Can we, for the next notice, can we update that?
Yeah, there was a, there was a cover, I don't have any access to it. It was essentially a memorandum that was added to the agenda with the call-in information about the meeting. So, it was posted, if you will, on the website, but we can do that more clearly next time if you wish, sure.
Yeah, I just, just, just to make sure we're not
Can you read like where the button that says GoToMeeting?
Keeping anyone out of there. Okay, anything further, guys?
Yeah, if I could, can we schedule another meeting in a couple of weeks?
Yep, when do you want to schedule that meeting?
Well, Monday, June 1st.
Hey, Mike, once the official ruling on whether changes in the zoning regs can be considered a hardship, I keep trying to get an answer on that and I don't, I don't, I even asked Luisos, I ask everybody.
I asked Luisos, and his response to you was pretty clear and unequivocal. It can't be the sole basis for the hardship.
But it can be added as an element of it?
Correct, so like you could do change in zoning regulations and a safety issue, and then you've got a valid hardship.
Okay.
Problem, you know, with some of the applications we saw, they didn't really flesh out that statement.
True. If I, if I may, never know where my camera is, but if I may, Mike, do you think we might want to share Bobby, I'm not too sure of Bobby Bernie, Bobby Bernie's email relative to the historical nature of hardships being of consideration? That email came in at, tonight, at 6:50 great. That's why you guys, you know, Mike and I were on it, or Mike was on it, both of us, but we didn't really have all that information until 6:53. I'm happy to share it, Mike, I think maybe that's a good idea, I don't know.
Can you just read it?
I'm sure it's too long to read.
Is it?
Okay, I'll take care of that.
All right, good job, guys.
Oh, wait, wait.
Can we schedule our next meeting, please? Hello?
Sorry about that, go ahead.
Can we schedule a meeting?
I can't hear.
Losing mic again.
What dates are you proposing?
Oh, okay, Monday, June 1st, or Thursday, June 4th. So, the question is, are you guys available to meet on those dates, either or? We can't do Wednesday of that week because of other meetings, our GoToMeeting challenges here are limited, so. We have three outstanding applications from a couple of months ago, and that's why I'm anxious to get them heard.
Well, I understand, but when is the next regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting?
June 17.
Why aren't we doing it June 17?
Because we've had these outstanding other applications that would like to be heard sooner if possible. So, the question is.
I've got nowhere to go.
I may be in Mexico.
No, you can't go.
Jeff, you're not playing golf? Come on.
I've played golf, I think, the last 18 days in a row. But I don't think I've been playing at seven o'clock at night.
Take your day off.
Hey, Mike, I'd also like to get some additional information on the historical nature serving as a hardship. That's kind of confusing and opening up a big can of worms, so I'd like to get some specific to that.
Jeff is circulating the email we got, but they said you can prove him, he didn't get a chance to do case law. It's not, it's the same argument we've used, I can't remember the property, Jeff, he and I were both floored by it, that if all the properties on the street are 10 feet from the road, the default setback is 10 feet from the road. And so, it's the same type of argument where if it's in the neighborhood, and if it's in a hardwood neighborhood, I think you gotta, gotta be, be that, be that.
Yeah, well, that's different than preserving the historical nature of the house. That argument is about keeping the neighborhood kind of in line. But preserving the historical nature of the house, that's new to me.
It's new to us, too.
It's unique to Prospect because the historical nature of the street is the nature of the neighborhood. Not specifically historical, it's the nature of the neighborhood. Okay. I don't know.
I mean, I think if you looked Can I speak?
I think that's
I think if you looked in other towns that have historical neighborhoods, that are designated historical neighborhoods, you would find out there's like massive restrictions on what they can do. I don't know if we've ever come to the point where we had to make up rules and regulations about that, but it would be worth exploring for sure. I mean, I would get Marion Castell's thoughts on that.
We dealt with that on that Ring Zen property in
Yeah.
Right, there's no historical neighborhoods in Darien, and there's no historical districts, I don't think, although that was something that might have been talked about on that. I mean, it's not a bad idea, but we just don't have them.
Well, because they've never been designated, but it doesn't mean perception-wise, there isn't.
All right, let's, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
June 17.
Unanimous?
Okay.